Whereas, the Brunswick County School Board has convened an executive meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Brunswick County School Board that each executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brunswick County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters that were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by Brunswick County School Board. All board members in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it, the motion carries. We'll now call the meeting to order. Ms. Claire, will you please take a roll call attendance?
Ms. Seward?
Present.
Mr. Warwick?
Here.
Dr. Burns?
Present.
Ms. McMillan?
Present.
Mr. Poirier?
Present.
Thank you. And thank you all for, woo, thank you all for joining us on this evening. As a reminder, we ask that everyone, please silence your phones and smartwatches as well so we'll have no interruptions throughout the meeting. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there any discussion that needs to be had on the agenda? If no, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. We will now call for our student of the month, or our student for this month to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And that is Ms. Mackenzie Davis. Yay, Mackenzie, of Red Oak Sturgeon. Ms. Mackenzie.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mackenzie Davis, and I am a sixth grade student at Red Oak Sturgeon Elementary School. Please stand and pause for a moment of silence. Please remain standing and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you. The Brunswick County Public School Vision and Mission Statement is, within a safe and supportive environment, we will provide every student with a strong education that will enable them to be productive citizens who are college and career ready and able to compete in an ever-changing world. Educating students, inspiring success, improving tomorrow. At Rose, we are riding on the energy bus with our students, parents, and community. Everyone at Rose, our principal, teachers, office staff, custodians, cafeteria staff, SRO, and substitutes. Our fueling our students with positive energy and creating positive visions every day, both inside and outside the classroom. Later, our principal, Ms. Finney, will present important Rose data to you. We had an awesome turnout and amazing community participation for our trunk-or-treat event. Thank you to everyone who joined in the fun. We are currently hosting a food drive to collect canned goods for our community. Please bring in your donations to our school to help those in need. The food drive will end on Friday, November 14th. This Friday, we will host a Veterans Day lunch to honor our Red Oak Sturgeon Veteran Family members and community heroes. And tomorrow, we'll celebrate our first-ever Zern King and Queen Day. Our top three students who have completed the most Zern lessons will be crowned and wear their royal capes all day long.
All right.
Let's remember, together we can make it happen, and let's all jump on the energy bus.
Okay. Thank you. I love gifts. Thank you. You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you, Red Oak Sturgeon.
Thank you, Ms. Finney. Thank you, Mackenzie.
It's the energy bus. Look there.
I would get lost in a child, I'm sorry. Right back to the agenda. Thank you for such an excellent job, Mackenzie. Well, well done, and thank you for our energy bus. Next, we're gonna move right along to our superintendent's comments.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair of the Board members and members of the Brunswick County Public Schools community. Brief comments, slideshow that's in your packet, as we are moving through our falls. The year is zooming by. We have reached a point in the year where it's fall back, so we're on a new schedule now. Academic progress. Dr. Hampton and her team will share more details on academic progress, but we are taking steps to improve the overall academic services that are rendered to our students by completing walkthroughs at all schools. So, a group of educators, including myself, Dr. Hampton, instructional coaches, principals, and other admin at schools have done group walkthroughs. And the main reason why we wanted to do that was to norm the process and norm the feedback so that teachers at one school were getting similar feedback so that all across the county, we're working towards the same goals. Our focus on those items were assessments, assessment design, lesson planning, formative assessment, and making sure that the rigor and the level of questioning that's asked in the classroom during lessons matches the level of assessments that students are gonna see in their formal. Quarter one, report cards are going out. We're continuing to utilize the CIP nine-week and four-and-a-half-week benchmark testing to compare our results with our other colleagues across the state who use that testing system. Tutoring, Dr. Hampton will give you more information about that, but we are ready to get started with the tutoring process after school. Professional Development Day was successful. We had that last week when school was closed for students during the asynchronous learning day. And Dr. Hampton has also scheduled some of our math and science teachers to travel to Region Eight PDs later this week with instructional specialists from the VDOE. So, we're looking forward to that. And grant funding solutions, I think these tie in to academics, so I left that on this slide. Russ DLT, it's a distance learning and telemedicine grant that is funded by the federal grant agencies. Mr. Mays and I have been working with a rep from a company that's gonna help us apply for that grant. It will be out in January, but that grant, we're hoping to be able to secure the funding for that, which can be used for technology, smart boards, computers, networking, cloud storage space, and upgrading our access points. So, we're looking forward to having that grant come through for us. The VDOE Math Innovation Grant was made available to schools, and that grant actually closes this week, so our application will go in. We had an option to apply for that grant as a standalone school division, but the Department of Education encouraged schools to apply in groups. They want school divisions to collaborate with each other, share best practices, share resources, share ideas, and come up with creative ways to help students succeed. So, Dr. Hampton is working with a select group of other school divisions in Region Eight, and Brunswick will be a part of a consortium that will apply for that innovation grant. And the I Teach Grant, fortunately, we were awarded the $6,100. That is enough to cover two of our teachers in the ACE program for I Teach. So, those are teachers who are switching their career from another field, have a college degree, but did not major in education, and those teachers can complete their courses through I Teach to earn their full teaching endorsement. First nine weeks out in the hallway, please take an opportunity to look at. And that's just one sample from Tetero, but all over the county, our principals and teachers have been focused on having students learn through hands-on activities. We know students learn best by doing, so we want them to have as many opportunities as possible. CTE improvements. We have a, we are now in possession of five new welding machines that all operate on three-phase power, so they're stronger and bigger than the welding machines we had before, which were all donated to us through Dominion Power. See, Ms. McMillan shaking, I know she's been big on that one, so thank you for making contact with Dominion. And Zern, we're, as I did not know about the Zern King and Queen, so Mackenzie, thank you for letting us know about that. But students are using Zern. It is one of the programs that is being pushed throughout the area. Other superintendents are telling me their students are using Zern as well, so we're seeing big results from that. We want our students to continue using it. I had a chance to attend a assembly at Tetero. Supreme Court Chief Justice Cleo Powell came and gave the students an inspiring message. She talked to them about setting goals, making good decisions. And then, one of the most amazing things, if you've seen that picture, all those little hands that are up, she probably spent about an hour just letting the students ask her any type of questions. When did you decide you wanted to be a lawyer? What's it like being a judge? What's your little hammer made out of? And she took a lot of time with them, and we were invited to travel to the Supreme Court for a field trip. So, we definitely gonna take her up on that, and we wanna go. Another highlight, we really enjoyed the community activity with the trunk-or-treat. One of our principals here, Ms. Jones Finney, showed up. She was Cruella De Vil. And I still don't know how she could wear a coat made out of Dalmatians, but just sick. We had a great time with trunk-or-treat. Career Day, our elementary school students have been exposed to Career Day and Title I Parent Engagement Nights. Lots of community support, EMTs, Mecklenburg Electric, Sheriff's Department have all come out and given students an opportunity. Those kids were so excited to get to climb inside the fire truck and learn about how the pumps and all the different switches and turn the lights on, on the fire truck. And some of them, you see those little kids with their hard hats. They got to be power line workers, but I think it's great that our students are having an opportunity to see what careers are at that young age, and that they are being inspired to know that they can pursue any type of career. At Rose, not Rose, I'm sorry, at NP, when they had their Title I Parent Engagement Night, a rescue flight helicopter landed, and the kids were so excited, so, to see the helicopter. But yeah, they saw a forester, all types of different careers, an author, a chef, a business owner. Just lots of people came out, and kids were really asking a lot of questions. How do you get to do that? What, how can I do that? How old do I have to be in order to do that? And I'm just glad they're thinking about their futures at these very young ages. Facilities projects, the middle school improvements, the RFP for the JOT contracts, those are the job order contracts, small individual projects such as painting, electrical work, flooring. Those things are all out now on Eva, so contractors can respond to those individually. The first time, we looked for one general contractor to handle all that work, and we think we're gonna get more competition in order to get the job done by having that. So, that is available now, and we expect to, by the next meeting, have some individual bids back for you. The next thing, BHS gem, we have a couple of projects going. We have some broken bleachers. Basketball season is getting started. At the start of this year, the AC wasn't working properly. The AC drive motor has been installed, so the AC works in there. The bleachers that were broken were all repaired, and today, I signed the work agreement for a professional company to come in, sand the floor, and coat it with polyurethane. In the past, we've had our custodians come in, and it's been waxed, stripped in wax. That's not the best way to maintain the floor, and it doesn't give it the right amount of grip. It's more slippery where someone could not have the best grip. So, Mr. Owens now has the work agreement, and then he'll work with the contractor to select a date when this can be done. The contractor says they can do it in about a day, and then it's about four days total after it's done that it needs to set completely cure before students can get back on it. But we'll have that done, hopefully, before the first basketball game. The games are scheduled to begin in the first week of December. We wanna get it done before then. New elementary school, things are progressing. There's a picture from the inside of the kitchen where the ladders are. But on the left side of that, that's not what's in our school, but it's an idea of what could be in our school. Mr. Poirier and I had an opportunity to attend a furniture expo, and we saw lots of creatively designed, kid-friendly furniture options. And we're hoping to bring some of those things to Brunswick County to make sure that the school is not just functional, but fun. So, we wanna make sure it's decorated and painted in a way that inspires students and makes it feel like a place they wanna be in. New elementary school, things upcoming, sprinkler inspections, all the sprinkler piping is in. They are dropping in the ceiling tiles like the ones you see above our heads in the classrooms. Finish coats of paint are going in, if I learned how to spell paint. They're completing the elevator installation. Bathroom stalls are being put in, all of the fixtures are in, the toilets and sinks, but now, the plastic partitions are being put up. The sidewalk concrete and light poles will be coming shortly, and by the end of this month, they will, you can go to the next slide, finished paving the parking lot. The, we had some questions about the road here at Planters and on school days, still being gravel. The same contractor that is going to pave that parking lot is going to pave the road. So, when they come in to pave the parking lot, the road will be fixed. It's rock right now, but we had some issues with the rocks just from constant traffic being pushed out of the way and pushed down on the ground. We had a couple potholes, so they came in, added more gravel last week, but they'll continue to add gravel until the road is fully paved over. Athletic stadium project, the RFP has been reviewed. Our principal architect, Josh Bauer from CRA, has written that. It went to Sands Anderson, who's the school board's attorney. They had some feedback, some things that they redlined for Josh to change. Those changes have all been sent back to him. We had two firms who successfully completed the RFQ, and then, this new version of the RFP is being distributed to those two firms. Building repurposing, there was one meeting held already. The next repurposing committee will be held on January 6th, 2026. The BOSS members have a constituent from each one of the districts in the county attending the repurposing committee to give feedback and receive information from us. So far, what they've asked us for is a written statement about the condition of each one of the schools that would potentially be closed, and that information's been provided to them, and we were clear about the Tetero school building. And that's all, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you, Seward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have presentations for the student of the month, as well as the employee of the month.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board and community at large. Our November senior of the month is none other than Ms. Grace Pearson. Certainly excited and delighted to have her. We're gonna ask Grace if she would come. Grace is the daughter of Mandy and Ian Pearson. She has achieved a cumulative GPA of 4.09. She is the president of the FCC LA, co-captain of the Scholastics Quiz Bowl, and a member of Y Street. She plans to pursue a bachelor's degree in clinical radiation sciences with a focus in pediatric diagnostic sonography. PDS. She is on the course to graduate with her CDA, her Child Development Association certification, or certification, and work with children as a part-time job. Grace enjoys gaming and reading in her pastime while studying ahead for college. Her favorite quote is, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Grace Pearson.
I'd like to thank everyone for this. It's been definitely a long school year, and it's definitely been something. But I appreciate the opportunities the school has been able to give me for what it is. So, I thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair, Ms. Seward, Vice Chair, Mr. Warwick, board members, Dr. Carter, and the greater Brunswick community. It is my pleasure to recognize our employees of the month coming from our Maintenance and Child Nutrition Department. Brunswick County Public Schools is proud to recognize Mr. Earl Jarrell as the employee of the month for the BCPS Maintenance Department. Mr. Jarrell, can you join me up front, please? As he's coming forward. Since joining the BCPS Maintenance Department, Mr. Jarrell has consistently gone above and beyond to secure and make our school safe, well-maintained, and fully operational for staff and students. Whether responding to urgent work orders, supporting special projects, or assisting school teams with day-to-day needs, he approaches every assignment with professionalism, initiative, and a strong attention to detail. He is dependable, resourceful, and always willing to step in wherever help is needed. His ability to problem solve, communicate effectively, and take pride in his craft has quickly earned the respect and trust of his colleagues. Maintenance supervisor, Mr. Wesley Thomas, shared that if he had to describe Mr. Jarrell in just one word, and everyone knows Mr. Thomas is gonna give you more than one word, he said it would be that he is outstanding. I would like to introduce some and present to others, Mr. Earl Jarrell.
Thank you. Yes. Please.
No, no, no screw drop.
Ms. Pearson, if I may, while you have him here, with it being the eve of Veterans Day, Mr. Jarrell is also a veteran of the United States Army, so salute to your service and any other veterans in the house. Please stand and be recognized and saluted. Are there any other veterans in attendance this evening?
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. It is with great appreciation that we recognize Ms. Melinda Morgan for her outstanding service and dedication to our cafeteria. Ms. Morgan, please join me up front. Ms. Morgan has been with the Child Nutrition Department for four years. She was promoted to cafeteria manager last year at Red Oak Sturgeon Elementary School. As a valued member of the food service team, Ms. Morgan consistently goes above and beyond to ensure every guest enjoys a positive dining experience. As the Child Nutrition Supervisor, Ms. Rhonda Crutchfield stated that Ms. Morgan brings a positive attitude, strong work ethic, and genuine care to everything that she does, whether it's greeting our smallest customers with a smile, keeping the cafeteria running smoothly during busy hours, or helping her teammates without being asked. Ms. Morgan has set a wonderful example of professionalism and teamwork. She is known by many of the staff members as Sunshine, and this is exactly what she brings when she comes in every day. Her favorite quote is, "Stay ready so you don't have to get ready." Thank you so much, Ms. Morgan, for your commitment to excellence and for making our cafeteria at Red Oak Sturgeon a warm and welcoming place for everyone. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and we are proud to have you as part of our team. That concludes my presentations.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna take a small, very brief intermission so we may recognize our award winners. so we may recognize our award winners. Thank you, citizens. We have returned, and we were reconvening with our open session meeting. Next, we'll continue with the agenda, moving right along to citizens' comments. Ms. Clary?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak?
Okay. Next, we'll have Dr. Hampton and her team come up with the instruction report.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Carter, Ms. Seward, School Board Chair, hello, and the community. Good evening, and thank you for having us here. We will go ahead and get started. So as you know, our work continues to remain aligned with our strategic plan, Goal One. So I know we've always reviewed those, but just keeping in mind academic excellence across the board, multiple pathways and delivery formats for student success. All right, so I know Dr. Carter mentioned our Professional Development Day, which we had on Tuesday, November fourth. I completely forgot to upload the schedule because I was excited. I wanted you all to see. It was jam-packed. It was loaded. But we were very excited about, you know, just being able to provide those opportunities for our teachers as well as our principals, just to understand, understanding data, the systems that we're using, like Xern, Lexia, and making sure that everyone has a good grasp on that. And that's just based on hearing from teachers, hearing from our coaches, and even hearing from administrators about, you know, they do, they would like to participate or learn more about the programs because we wanna make sure that we're using them with fidelity. So there are some additional pictures. That picture, it's kind of late, the first one, with the principals, but that was just to recognize them for Principal Appreciation Month and thank them for all the hard work that they do. As you can see, we also had Chick-fil-A. So I do want to continue to give a huge kudos to Ms. Mallory. We were able to partner with Chick-fil-A, and so we did, we were able to create prepaid lunchboxes. The staff filled out the form, they said what they wanted, they made their payment to their bookkeeper, and then we were able to get everything delivered to us on that PD Day. So that was great because I, you know, people have shared that, you know, sometimes there're not a lot of different options, especially for the timeframe that we had available for them to have lunch. We just wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to enjoy. So we were excited about that, and we will continue the partnership. And also, because we raised, well, we didn't raise technically, but because we were able to make a purchase of seven hundred and fifty dollars, they were able to give some money back to the division for that. So we were super excited, and then they now have offered that up to our schools as well. So if principals, and I've already had one principal, I want, you know, I want to participate in that. And I do wanna actually say giving kudos to Mr. Samuel because he bought his entire staff their lunchboxes. So it just goes to show, you know, the continued pouring into the staff and treating them. So yes, as you can see, we also, um, next picture, please. Next picture, you'll see again that we, and even on the first picture, but we had different pictures of our presenters, our principals engaged, our teachers engaged. They were asking questions. I love the back and forth that was happening. And then we also gave out prizes. So we have, October was a very busy month in terms of professional development at the division level for our instructional team. So with doing that, many of our team members were able to bring, bring back gifts from different prizes and things that were won, and then we were able to share that with the staff during PD Day. So we just wanted to highlight that for you all. All right, next slide. So as Dr. Carter mentioned, we did conduct our instructional walkthroughs. We started in the month of October, and our goal is to do them on a monthly basis. Now, I will say November is kind of short because, short because we have that week off, and we're just getting the, excuse me, just getting the feedback out to the staff. So it's probably going to be, the next one would be in December, but we're following the same format. So here you just have what are, it's not really showing, but it's at the top of the line where it just says key findings and next steps based on our instructional walkthrough. So it was myself, Dr. Carter, the principal, anyone else on the principal's school leadership team, as well as our instructional coaches. And we wanted to keep it small because everyone, we all went in with a focus. We go in for about fifteen minutes. We have a criteria, different things that we, instructional look-for's that we look for. We fill out our form, and then we come back as a team after the walkthrough to debrief and to talk about what we're seeing and what's happening. And then that's where you'll find the key findings, what we have seen during those walkthroughs. What I will mention, it was, I enjoyed it. I enjoy doing that. One, you get to see what the students are actually doing in the classrooms, and you can also see the work that our teachers are doing. So in every single classroom, there was direct tier-one instruction happening. In every single classroom, there was student engagement happening. And lesson plans were available. Sometimes people may think that that's, that's not a big deal, but it is. It's a very big deal. So lesson plans were available for us to look through and be able to provide feedback based off of what we're finding in those lesson plans. Right? To make sure that it's aligned, there's rigor attached, and it makes, because we are following the backward-by-design approach, we wanna make sure that that's what's happening in our classrooms. So I definitely, again, enjoyed having to go in and talk with the coaches and actually hear from the principals, too, about what their thoughts were. Because what happens after we debrief, then the principals are now tasked with reaching out to the teacher to share what our findings were. So then that way, again, they're hearing from, directly from their principal, but it's at the, from the feedback and the debriefing from us as an instructional team. So this form will be going out, the key findings, and this will go out every month after each walkthrough is over. I just needed to make a few adjustments, and then it will be going out this week to the entire division because my goal is to continue to let, as long, the more people that know, the more hands that we can have supporting us. So we will also have, share it out with everyone. All right, next slide. Uh, and the next slide, I'll let Ms. Wesley.
So again, we believe in providing evidence of what we've seen in our instructional impact walkthroughs. So just a brief synopsis of that. Dr. Hampton mentioned that lesson plans were available. One of the main components of lesson plans are the objectives. And, you know, the standards can have objectives written in very broad terminology. So we focused on student-centered objectives. So after the lesson is over, students can actually articulate what they were required to learn and show mastery and evidence of them mastering the concepts. You can see that the teacher here, Dr. Malloy, one of the biggest components is culturally responsive teaching and relevancy. So they were reading a story on an athlete in particular. So before they read it, she pulled up a picture or image of that athlete and to introduce it to the students so they could relate to what they were about to read. Because some of the texts that are selected can be of high rigor. So we wanna start scaffold them, you know, introduce them, and then build them to that level of text complexity. You can see our students are doing the gaming approach in Aspire Review, using what was once quizzes that's now way ground. You can also see in that last image, that's Magna Math. We've purchased Magna Math as a supplemental resource for our math intervention, and our teachers are using like the data dashboard to actually disaggregate the data. Anchor charts are there, and that last image speaks to what Dr. Hampton just said. We have student-centered learning activities, and we can see that the students are excited. There's a thumbs up, and they're, you know, excited to share what they've been required to master. So the Instructional Impact Walkthroughs, that's the data of what we've seen. And what's in the lesson plan, it's actually being done in the actual classroom. So we were excited.
And I will also, just to piggyback off of that, I definitely, it was great to walk into a classroom, and the students didn't know we were coming. Some teachers knew, some teachers did not. But the students were so pleasant and so mannerable, and it's welcome. And you can sit here, and I just really enjoy that. And if you notice, can kind of tell in the middle, there's a heart with the sticky notes, and it's students writing sticky notes to each other, talking about love and just loving one another. And, you know, that just goes to show the support of that social-emotional learning and being culturally responsive, you know, it's a space for everyone. And so that's what we also saw in every classroom. Every classroom, you can tell that teachers have set the expectation about behavior, about focus, and it was very evident when we went through the little walkthrough. All right, next, next, please.
All right, so we are super excited for our newest piece, which is the Instruction Insider. Sorry, I've never been told that I was, can't hear me. That's a surprise. I'm like, oh my, yeah, that's a new one for me, so. All right, so let me start over. One of the key pieces we wanna make sure that we always are inclusive of, of course, is parental involvement and keeping our families engaged and in the know of what is going on in school and how they can also support us in that home environment as we work together collectively as a team to make sure that we nurture and educate the whole child holistically. So we are excited that we are gonna be starting a new piece called the Instruction Insider, which is a family edition newsletter that the Department of Instruction will be putting out. It's going to feature updates to our division data and student progress. It's gonna provide families with key dates and important announcements, especially surrounding testing and different components of that and how to make sure that they are prepared for testing. It is going to share, again, those instructional strategies, highlight ways to engage students at home. Engagement's key. We have to make sure that our students are engaged because when they are engaged, that's when we get the best performance and progress out of them. And last but not least, which I already stated as I was talking at the beginning, we just wanna make sure that we're able to strengthen that homeschool connection between what's happening at school and what's happening at home. Because if we support each other, then that's where we get where we need to be. We wanna make sure that we have that connectivity there and keeping our families informed, connected, and engaged in student success. Dr. Hampton, anything to add to that?
No, except that the instructional team, they're on it. You know, they are doing, you know, gave them some roles to cover in terms of certain particular areas that they will cover for our newsletter, just making sure that we're, you know, covering from elementary to secondary and just providing those strategies and tools that parents can use at home. And this is just our way of making sure that all stakeholders are aware of what's happening in the division, outside of just the school board meeting, but what's actually happening and ways that they can support us. So we're super excited about it. I even called a last-minute meeting on Friday with the team, and they were looking at me like, and I'm like, I know, guys, but you know, again, we're answering the call. There's a call. You were. You know, but we are answering the call, you know, because we do wanna make sure that our parents are aware. You know, I hear from parents often, so I'm not hearing from them because they just want to talk. Right? But I'm hearing from them because they have a concern or they have questions, and they wanna make sure that their child is being taken care of at the school and getting the best education. So we wanna just make sure, because parents don't get to see what we're seeing every day in the classroom. So, you know, I know if parents were to walk in like we did with the walkthroughs, they would be like, wow. So super exciting, and also, we will have more pictures moving forward so then that way, we're also able to show what even our younger students are doing. All right, next one, please. All right, so we are going to move into the data piece for this meeting. We wanted to make sure, because our principals are aware of what's happening in their buildings, and we just wanna make sure that you all are able to hear from them as well as they take a chance, I mean, they take an opportunity to analyze their data and then share what their next steps will be, but in also celebrating what their data looks like. You know, because we do have to celebrate all the wins, right? To make sure, because that's that encouragement for our students and for our teachers to know that, yes, we see what you're doing, and we do wanna recognize them for that. And we do want to recognize them for that. So, um, Ms. Bianca will start here and then we will start, the principals will come up just to share their data with you all.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hampton. Uh, first up is the elementary first grade data that you guys have in front of you. Um, the first one is for reading and that is done through our HMH platform. And which our first grade students are delivered, uh, a set of paired passages. And from that set of paired passages, they are asked ten questions. In which they would have to go back and prove their answers. And you guys can see here that our first graders, um, their overall performance as far as their average was absolutely amazing. Um, the average overall for first grade was ninety point eleven percent. Um, and then of course, you can see the different breakdown by each school for what that overall performance actually was. Um, so our students at the first grade level are getting that comprehension. And that's what, um, that's how this varies from VALS and VKRP. That VALS is focused on phonics and phonemic awareness. Where the HMH program is focused on comprehension at the first grade level. So what our students are actually able to comprehend and what they're actually able to answer. Beneath the reading, you will see math, which was delivered through the Mastery Connect format or platform. And you will see each school there. You will see Maheron-Powellton, Tetera, and Red Oak Sturgeon there as well and their students. In the middle, that is the average score for each school. So for example, at Maheron-Powellton, the average score for first grade math students was ninety percent. You can see the area in green and then you can see where they are in yellow near mastery. Um, and then of course, that red is remediation. So our first grade students, and I'm just leading the way. So as everyone else comes up to present after this, it will follow that same path. Where you'll be able to see that average score in the middle for, um, the schools. And then you will be able to see, of course, um, our red, yellow, and green bands. I will say that the green represents anywhere from eighty to, um, a hundred percent. Yellow is anywhere from seventy-nine to sixty and red would be, uh, fifty-nine and below. Um, so just to give you an idea of what those, um, scoring bands actually look like when the students take the assessment.
Now, if I could ask one. Now, I was, I was just looking at the numbers, um, of students who tested. Like it's more at some schools than others. Is it a reason for that? Or like sixteen out of sixteen from Maheron-Powellton, then it was like forty-five out of the forty-six students. That, so the numbers appear to be different that are testing at each school.
Yes, that's based off of their school population at each school and how many students are in that. For example, Maheron-Powellton only has one first grade class right now. And there are sixteen students in that first grade class. Tetera Elementary School has, uh, three first grade classes. And Red Oak Sturgeon has two first grade classes. So it's based off of that school population. And then they find that average score based off of the school population.
Okay. Is that pretty much the same, excuse me? Is that pretty much the same for the reading as well?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. What you're looking at, the numbers are the same for the, these are just two different platforms. So when they present the information, one presents with the, the number of students and one presents without the number of students. But it's still the same number of students for each academic area, um, reading and math.
Okay.
Alright, alright, so I think, um, who is up next? Next slide please, Mr. Mase. Um, is going to be Red Oak Sturgeon. So Ms. Vinnie's going to come up and share some amazing things with you guys.
I'm on my way. I'm trying to figure out how I became first, but anyway. I'll do that with pride. Okay, for our reading, if you look at it for Red Oak Sturgeon, our second grade, fifty-seven percent of the students were proficient on the test. Third grade was seventy-six percent. Fourth grade is sixty-five, fifth grade is eighty-five, and sixth grade is seventy-seven percent. Because the score in the middle is the average score for students. It's not the percent of students who passed.
Got it.
Let me see there, yeah. Yes. So we, like when you see sixty-three percent, in the middle, that's the average score. So the average score out of all the students was a sixty-three. But you have to add up the green and the yellow to get the actual percentage.
Got it.
Right. So.
What slide are we on?
What's wrong?
No, no, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to process it.
Okay, so second grade is fifty-seven percent passed. Third grade is seventy-six percent, fourth grade is sixty-five, fifth is eighty-five, and sixth is seventy-seven.
Right, because you took the green and the yellow.
I took the green and the yellow and added them together.
Yeah.
Right, for the percentage.
And we're, and we're seeing the sixty-three percent.
But we're doing, we're doing an average.
I'm talking about the average.
But the average means the average score. Like out of all of like ten kids took the test and out of that ten kids, the majority of them scored a sixty-three. But if I'm doing how many passed the test, then I'm going to add the green and the yellow.
Right.
Right.
And that's how many passed the test.
So are we looking at passing or are we looking at average score? I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're comparing, you know, with the first presentation, I think it was average score. The sec, and the, as we move down, are we looking at average score or are we looking at pa, um, pass rate?
I look at pass rate.
I think that's what, they're graded.
But I think the other one was the pass rate. Didn't you do pass rate, Ms. Bianca? Didn't you say pass rate and average score? I think she said both. They're asking for the one that. Can you go up, Mr. Mase? Back up. Yeah, keep up.
Right.
Right.
Right, because it's different, has the average score, but the focus really is more of us looking at that pass rate. Right? And so, and so that's what I was just sharing with the team. That when we proceed next time, what we'll do is just provide that because I don't want it to throw the extra, you know, make any, cause any confusion.
And, and I think, you know, one of the things, you know, we talked about no child left behind.
Right, absolutely.
And it's looking at the big picture and that is the complete picture.
Right.
So when we look at average score, not, we're not just looking at those students who passed.
Exactly.
Because if only thirty percent passed and we got seventy percent that's failing. You know, we're, we're missing a large, you know, large portion of our, um, our student population. So I want to make sure that as we are looking at this, we're looking at average score, you know, average score. If we're saying there's average score, then what is our average score? You know, we're looking at, this is our pass rate, then there's a pass rate. But I think that for us to have a good idea of where we stand is looking at the average score. Um, because now that we're.
But, but that's not how kids are graded. That's not, that's not how kids are graded though. And that's not how the system works. It's good for us to know that our average score was ninety percent overall. But it's also very good to know that eighty-three percent of our students, ninety-three percent of our students are actually passing. And then those who are in red, because they always say, the simplest for me is the green gets bigger and the red gets smaller and the yellow disappears. Bigger, y'all, it's smaller and disappearing. Uh, because that's a pretty green line and the yellows, we're going to get it to the green. But I think because we are graded on what we pass, those who pass.
Right.
And we're not leaving behind the ones who didn't pass, but we're just telling you who did pass. And of course, we're working on everybody.
Yeah, we're embracing the red.
Getting everybody to that passing, right. Getting them out that red.
Absolutely.
But we just, right.
It's going to disappear, but.
Yes, and that's, that's the goal. That, that is definitely the goal to have that red disappear. And it's just overall, we do really want you all to take a look at, just like you said, looking at and recognizing and celebrating the green. Right? Because to say for the first nine weeks. Is that the right one we were on?
We were at Red Oak Hurst.
Oh, yeah.
So you went to Red Oak?
Yeah. Looking at Red Oak and seeing, okay, right here, we're seeing where we have thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of the students that are green. That are scoring in that eighty to one hundred. But then we also know there's some work to be done so that we are moving our kids from the red and from the yellow into our green.
So, so the, so the percentage that's listed in the middle column, is that the average, is that the average score? Or is that the percentage of average, um, the pass rate?
That is the average score.
Average score.
Average score is fifty-seven.
Yes, that's shared with us in Mastery Connect.
And yeah, and I think we also have to take in consideration the reason why I also asked about if you go back down, Mr. Mase. To the other numbers, like Tetera, one of them had sixteen students to test. So out of those sixteen students, you had ninety percent. But then you had forty-five out of the forty-six students, so you have a larger population. So you have a greater chance of your score going down. Because you're testing more kids at that point where you can say, hey, if I only had, I pride myself when I was a CNA instructor. And it's just side note, that I had a hundred percent pass rate for my students who took the state board. I only had one student take state.
True story.
Well, that's a hundred percent.
For Mastery Connect, is your cut score for getting into the yellow was sixty?
Sixty, yeah.
So, Mr. Carr, here, I, I did want to address your question. So that average score in the middle, that is actually the mean of the amount of scores. So where we take everyone's score and then of course, if we have ten students. So it's not the most, like the score that you see the most, but it's actually the mean of the students. Um, and the importance of looking at the average score sometimes is because that gives you even a little bit more detail into the insight. Um, uh, but when you're looking at those pass rates. So in other words, if we're seeing a large, a large amount, amount of green. But then still our average score is around sixty. Even though we're seeing a large amount of pass, that average score is still, we're still not seeing a whole lot of, of lot of growth there. So that average score is indicative of also seeing where some of our students might be. And those two, we try to triangulate those two. So we can look at the average score and that hopefully that triangulates with our pass rate. And if those two are not lining up, then, then we've got something wrong. That means we've got some outliers out there where we might have a one hundred and a one hundred. And then we might have someone scoring a five and a five. And that average score is important to know based off of that pass rate. So we can use those outliers to determine where our students actually are. So that's why both of them are there so that you can see what that average score is. And then you can see what those pass rates are. Because in classes, I have seen as we have our data meetings, we have seen students that have scored a one hundred. And then students that have scored a five. When you throw a five in there, then you're talking dropping, but that is not indicative of the whole class. And so that's why we try to make sure that we look at both of those, um, and kind of go through. And we go through student by student actually, because that's what we have to do. We look at each student, each student has a face. And we look at the data that is represented there. But, um, that's why both are included, because it gives us the mean. It also lets us know if we see an outlier, when those pass rates don't match what we're seeing in that average column. You know, so I just wanted to get up because I know you were like, so I get up.
Yeah, 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 I was just trying, yeah.
Is that, is that clarification? Does that make sense?
It does, it does. And I guess one question I'm looking at is we look at the data and we see the first grade data and then we see the second and third. I'm just trying to kind of pinpoint, you know, where we maybe, you know, where, I'm not going to say where we're losing the kids. But where they may be kind of falling behind and if that, you know, we can kind of close that gap. And I understand that each student may be different, you know, whatnot, but just trying to figure out where that may be a dis, you know, if there's a disconnect. And I'm not sure if we can.
If there's any major trends or anything that we need to look at as far as gaps in instruction. Where we start to see that trend of where that green is, is growing. Or, and then where it kind of, where does it stop growing? And where do we start to see it losing its, its form? In other words, so.
And that's where those data meetings at the school are actually happening. So that they're drilling down and identifying what's going on, um, with the student. So the schools have their, um, data meetings. But we are also at the division level going to have our data meetings with the principal as well. Before they meet with their teams to have data meetings as well.
Thank you, math teacher. Let's get them to sit down. Okay. So key findings. Second and fourth grade show, I'm still in reading, show foundational skill graphs, which is probably with, um, decoding. And making sure that they can decode the words and read the words. Comprehension is another area that they're forming, they're having issues with in literary terms, which was just vocabulary. And that's really across the board in reading, science, and math. Fifth grade is our strength because eighty-five percent of the fifth graders showed were proficient in the test. So we're going to use, we've already used in our fifth grade teacher and our fourth grade teacher. So even though the scores may not be indicative, the fourth grade teacher's really strong. So we're having our department meetings and we are using strategies across the board. Like a lot of times, we want to wait until SOL and we want to give the kids paper and scrap paper and tell them to use strategies. But if we don't use those strategies with fidelity during the year, they're not going to use them on the test. So we are using them now. We're starting with, these are your techniques. I want you to highlight. I want you to write it down. Um, the kid's on the computer, so they don't want to use pencil and paper. Nope, you need to write it down. So that's one of the things we're doing. You can go ahead to math. For math, we have our, fifth grade is the most urgent area. With them, with fifth grade, it was word problems. Actually, with all the grades, it's word problems, which goes back to our reading. Sometimes it's not that they don't know what to do with the problem, but they can't read it to understand exactly what steps to use. So we are doing key words, even though we know sometimes the key words doesn't work, it works more time than not. So we are having the kids do key words. We are having them, what, um, when I say key words, I mean like when you see the word, um. Every, you know it means to add. Was that right word? I'm not sure. But, but just those key words that tell you when to add and when to subtract. But also key words for reading and math and science, what is the question? What are they asking you to do? Are you understanding the question? So those are another way that we're highlighting the key words. Um, we have them, we're doing word problems daily as part of our problem of the day. And, um, our Spire Review, they're doing word problems. What are they asking you to do? We're doing that in every grade because we realize that that's a weakness. We're also doing CRE where they, where they're starting with concrete. They're using concrete. If they're learning place values, they're using the hundreds, the tens, and the ones. And then they're going to a representation where they might draw pictures. And then they're going to the abstract where they just have to write it. So we're making sure they're going through all of those steps. And that was one thing that we saw when we did our walkthrough. We saw the teachers doing those models. So that is in math and science, we are at sixty percent. Again, one of the things we noticed was weak vocabulary knowledge. That they have to have more hands-on. They're doing, so we're doing now science experiments weekly, twice weekly if necessary. To make sure that the kids are doing that hands-on. Because hands-on, kids remember more when they're doing something as opposed to somebody lecturing to them. We're doing small, um, we're doing, so we're doing that. We're also doing that CRE in science. Um, for that one, that means claim, evidence, and reasons. What did you see when you did this science experiment? And they have to write it down. So we're connecting the writing and the reading with the science. What's your claim? What's your evidence of your claim? And that's one of the things that they're having difficulties with in reading is finding evidence. Where is your evidence? So it's again, it's a way of connecting all of the subjects. So we're not doing anything in isolation. As far as our next steps, we have already, we're already doing this. But we, uh, um, have our small groups that's based on our data. So that means that your group should change every day. I'm telling the teachers, when you do your lesson plans, I shouldn't see the same kids in the same group. Your group should be based on, you tested them this week. How did they do? Who do you need to put in this group? What activities do you need to do with them? And you can't do the same activity. Because if it didn't work the first time, now you got to do something different. What are you going to do different to help these kids grasp the information that you were teaching them? Um, we're also doing, we're modeling comprehension, comprehension strategies. Think allows, annotation, highlighting words, highlighting, um, numbers, just everything. When you're reading, numbering the passengers, going back to the passengers. So there are different skills that we are teaching them on a daily basis. Identifying those kids who we know are really struggling and making sure that we're working with them. We're going to start our tutoring soon. Uh, we have our weekly progress monitor. We also do at the school, we do, uh, a weekly data meeting. So we're looking at our datas weekly. And the teachers are meeting with me, but I'm telling them I'm getting ready to stop meeting with them. I want them to meet without me and I kind of just walk in. But I don't want to be holding their hands. When we have, we have a meeting also with Mrs. Bianco after every benchmark. And this year, the teachers had to create their own PowerPoints and explain their data. Because I don't want Ms. Bianco explaining the data for you. I need you to be able to tell me your data. So those are some of the things that we're doing. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Adam Chair, Vice Chair Board Members. I'm here to represent the Tetera Elementary School and our, uh, Principal, Principal Ms. Darlene Brown. Uh, as you see, our data is presented there. Um, across our school, entire school body, we have four, forty-four percent, uh, in the tier one group. Many forty-four percent showing, uh, reading proficiency. Uh, we have twenty-four percent in our tier two, those who are, um, uh, right on the border of achieving proficiency. And then we're right around thirty-two percent. And I'm looking across the school, uh, not just individual grades, because you can see those there. But across our school from second to sixth grade, about thirty-two percent, uh, are in that remediation, uh, group. Uh, so some of the, before I get there, uh, uh, you know, it's our strongest, uh, group. Uh, according to the test, there is our sixth grade. We have fifty percent of the, uh, sixth graders in that proficiency category. Uh, and our, uh, fourth grade is showing the greatest area of need. Uh, so some of our next steps, of course, we are across, uh, the school, we're providing that, um, core instruction. Uh, implementing daily guided reading and small group instructions. Uh, making sure that of course, we're doing those flexible groupings with fidelity, uh, across the grade levels. Also working to strengthen the phonics fluency and vocabulary instruction using differentiated materials and decodable tests. Of course, using our high, high-quality, uh, materials. Uh, and also we are increasing comprehension. Uh, and also, we are increasing comprehension practice, uh, using complex grade-level texts to build stamina and critical thinking. Uh, for our, uh, tier-two and tier-three, uh, we're providing targeted interventions using our progress monitoring, uh, data every two to three weeks. Uh, also utilizing the help of our reading specialists, our tutors, uh, which we hope to see very soon, and also our paraprofessionals to, uh, support, to support, uh, to deliver focused interventions during that intervention time. Uh, and also, we're collaborating with our exceptional education, uh, team to ensure that our, uh, students that receives, receives special education services are, uh, actually receiving the, um, necessary, uh, accommodations, and that those are being provided, uh, in alignment with their IEP goals and also our, uh, benchmark data. All right, we're gonna move on to the math. In our math, uh, showing a bit stronger there, our tier-one average across, uh, from second to sixth grade. We're looking at over, uh, fifty, we're looking at fifty-two percent, I mean, over half of our, um, student bodies performing, uh, proficiently in math. Uh, we have fourteen percent that are approaching that mastery, uh, and about thirty-five percent, uh, that are in that inter, in, in that remediation, uh, group, um, that we'll need to provide some more focused intervention for. Um, our second grade, again, the form is strong, sixty, sixty-one percent, uh, of our second grade students are proficient, according to the benchmark data, uh, and our, um, fifth grade is actually, uh, showing the greatest area of need. Uh, but we're very confident, uh, in our teachers, of course, in providing the necessary instruction to get the students on track. Uh, so some of our next, uh, steps for improvement, uh, in our math, that we're gonna continue our, uh, daily math small groups, emphasizing the conceptual understanding, making sure they, uh, again, as Ms. Finney talked about, know exactly what they're, uh, looking at when they see the different, uh, problems, uh, using our daily, data-driven, excuse me, data-driven instruction to reteach the skills that identified, uh, through the benchmark results, and also the formative assessments that are happening daily, uh, in the classroom. Uh, we want to work to, or not want to, but we are working, uh, to strengthen their math vocabulary and their reasoning skills, uh, to support multi-step problem solving, uh, and also real-world application. Uh, for our, uh, intervention, our focused intervention, we're providing that targeted, uh, tier-two and tier-three intervention during the intervention, uh, or math small group time. They're using hands-on and visual supports, uh, in the classrooms. Of course, also using progress monitoring, uh, making sure that the teachers, uh, as well as administration, we're looking at the data, uh, to make sure that we drill down and follow exactly what our students need, and make sure that they are receiving, uh, the appropriate, uh, support. Uh, and also collaborating, uh, with our wonderful instructional coach, uh, to make sure that we are providing the teachers the, the, um, appropriate support, so they can in turn provide that for our students. Uh, so that is Tetera's data.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So we were standing here with him, because, you know, he was like, huh. Don't worry about it.
He did a good job, and definitely, we, we, we can see the man behind the scene as well, too, so thank you, you did a good job.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Carter and the community at large. Maheron Powelton data, um, we're kind of holding our own high-sixties, seventies, and eighties are, um, pass rate for every subject, every grade level. Our weakest grade right now is third grade for reading and math. Um, sixty-seven percent for reading passed, and sixty-nine percent for math passed in third grade. Um, our science is still good, eighty-one percent, and our Virginia Studies is better than we were last year this time. We're at seventy-two percent for Virginia Studies.
Great, good job.
All of our students were tested, every grade level for math, reading, science, and Virginia Studies. Our numbers do show, uh, difference, because in fifth grade, it's showing twenty-three of twenty-four, but that's one student that came in after, in like October twenty-first. And then one of our fourth graders, we switched home rooms and Mastery Connect didn't work properly to, the data's there, Ms. Bianco tells me. I've got her scores, she, the child took her test, but it's not showing up in the data, but she did pretty good. Our weaknesses for reading, comprehension, vocabulary, phonics, just like the other two schools. We are working on those with, um, our tier-one, as well as our tier-two and tier-three with interventions. We're working, incorporating writing as well into all of our subjects to try to improve the writing part as well. Math, our weaknesses are word problems, again, focused back on that, reading, um, number sense and fact fluency. We are continuing our spiral reviews, which incorporates everything we teach, just give them one or two little problems, or one or two little reading things each day to keep everything fresh in their mind. Um, continuing our small groups, just like the other two schools are doing, after analyzing our data through the diagnostics, the benchmarking, the valves, to make sure we've got the students grouped properly, and we're giving them the instruction they need at their level. And we're teaching them as well, the testing strategies to prove their answers, go back and find it in the passage. Double-check your math problems, you know, those kinds of things, so. And I'm so happy that we got news last week that tutors can start. Thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all.
Very good.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I just, he was ready. Um, I just wanted to talk about, always. I did want to mention, um, the tutoring that is taking place. Um, I did reach out to, you know, because we're still waiting on many things from VDOE at this point. Um, and I didn't want us to continue to prolong because of the budget and holding off, because the further we got away, got further, we get into the school year, the harder it's going to become to try to close the gaps. Um, and so I was able to, you know, me and finance, we talk. Um, and so we do have a plan in place, and so principals will get their plan to me on how many tutors they need, who they need, but making sure that it's going to be done with fidelity. We're not just hiring people to provide tutoring, and they're not with the kids, right? We need to be able to see the data and see the growth, because if there is no benefit, I don't want us to get to the end of the school year, and then we're like, eh, it really wasn't worth it, right? We are starting late at this point, um, but no fault of anyone's, but we just want to make sure that when we do get it started, that it is really going to be beneficial to our students.
That's awesome.
Can you go to the next slide, please, Mr. Mays? All right, so this is the last slide for elementary, so I started us with elementary. We're gonna go out with a bang with elementary with, um, grade-five science and grade-four Virginia Studies. And, um, and what you're seeing on the screen, of course, is all three elementary schools again. Um, Mastery Connect was used for science as well as for Virginia Studies. Um, we know that science at the top has been one of our areas of weakness, um, for many years, but we can see that that green is definitely growing, and, um, that is due to a lot of cross-curricular activities, um, in the areas of math, reading, and science, and making sure that we are, um, kind of putting those three together, marrying them, um, if that would be a good phrase that makes sense, so that they are being exposed at all levels to, uh, different types of informational text, science, and even history. Um, and this is the best we've done in history to start with, um, in many years. I, I do want to say that, um, that's one of our, one of our areas of weakness as well. Um, but this is a good start for us compared to where we have started before in the past. Um, so I'm actually very proud of this data. Um, as far as science is concerned, we do have labs set up, um, and our students are expected to complete one hands-on experiment per week, per class. Um, they even have, um, I get so excited, because I, I get to see them doing their, their science experiments, and then they come back and they have their science logs, where they write down what they, what that process actually was, what their hypothesis was, and what they thought was gonna happen, and then if, if their prediction was correct or their hypothesis was correct, and then why. So I think that, um, just that critical thinking process that we are trying to embed across the, the whole board, um, and all academic areas, is really helping us, um, and, and our results in the areas of science and Virginia Studies. So, any questions regarding these two things?
No, thank you.
I just have a comment, I guess.
Yes.
Um, about the science. I noticed that there seems to be some great deal of success at Maheron Powelton with science. Do we share what we're doing from one school to the next with, you know, from, like, are we?
Yes, I am. We do share, uh, what we're doing as best as we can from one school, uh, to the next. Um, those teachers even communicate with one another sometimes, as far as what experiments they're doing, and if not, then I'm able to take one idea from one school to the next school. Um, so it is being shared. Um, sometimes timing can, you know, be an issue in how much time we have, and then, of course, sometimes numbers can play a trick on us, too. Sometimes having a larger group, when you have a, a, the larger your group, you know, then
Opportunity.
The opportunity, you know, when you have a smaller group, if we take someone like Maheron Powelton, it's a smaller group of kids, then we can break those kids into even smaller groups. And so I think sometimes that that grouping, that flexible grouping, when we already have smaller class sizes, helps them out at Maheron Powelton, sometimes in that, um, in that area, so. But yes, we do share, um, that is something that we do. And I, I say we have to share with, we have to share with everything, because the reality is, we are one. Um, we already are one, whether we're still in separate buildings at this time or not. I mean, we are one division, um, and we're after that same goal, and our hope to accomplishing the same things, um, at each school, so.
So, and when we talk about sharing, I always say my, our greatest resource is the human resource.
Absolutely.
But do we lend more of those human resources to, and not to take away from Maheron Powelton, because no good deed goes unpunished.
That's right.
But do we put more people towards, like, say, Tetera? Would Tetera get more, once we get our tutors on board, say, hey, we see a bigger need at Tetera for tutors than we need, or do we just kind of divvy them up and say, hey?
I'm gonna let Dr. Hampton take that one, as far as the tutors and what, um, the plan is for that. Just a little exercise, or just get.
And if it's something you haven't thought about yet, then that's fine.
No, and that is a part of the process, um, just sharing, but, so, last week, Ms. Bowen mentioned that I've asked each principal to submit their tutoring plan, what that plan looks like, how many, um, tutors they're going to need, and how many students we're going to serve, so that we can make sure that it is in alignment. Um, again, it, it goes back to the budget and what's available, so it's not going to be what everyone wants for each school as it is, until we can get some full clarification, but they will submit a plan to let me know how many tutors we need, and then I can connect with Ms., um, Clary to, you know, see what we can do. Um, and like you said, it is the class size as well, that does play a major factor. Um, and you know, we, that's in, and I'm not from here, but that's where the majority of the children go for Tetera. So you will often hear Ms. Brown share, right, and I definitely understand that, because yes, when you do have, like, her kindergarten class, there's twenty-five students in the kindergarten class at one school, whereas at another school, they have like sixteen, so that is a major difference, right? And so unless you have the bodies, the humans, to fill those gaps, and if we could get more people, that would be very helpful, right, because then we can kind of cut down on the, um, class sizes to help the teachers, and making sure that we do have powers in place that, you know, each school has powers where they do move to kind of lend some support from class to class, but. Um, so we haven't finalized the tutoring yet, but we were able to go ahead and approve that they submit their plan, and then we can see where we can go from there.
I just thought about something when you said that about Tetera. So do we also look at the experience of who's in the classroom? Because you mentioned there are twenty-five kindergarten teachers, I mean, students in one class right now. So what does that teacher look like in that classroom? You know what I'm saying, how seasoned is she, or is there another place he or she could go versus?
So, for example, that kindergarten, uh, grade level, it's one seasoned teacher, the other two people are new. Um, or the, it's, it went down to two now, it was three, but then it went down to two. And so then that's where the instructional coaches do come in, and make sure that they are lending that extra coaching support, um, where as needed, that's my conversations constantly with the principals. You know, if they have that particular teacher that, you know, we're keeping an eye on, that's, um, Dr. Carter mentioned, the VDOE trainings that are coming up this week. Again, we're looking at the data, but then also trying to build our teachers up as well. So what I would like to do, um, but I know there are probably fuss about trying to set up another meeting, but it's not necessarily a meeting, I want to get a place where we, our new teachers are, have an opportunity to kind of come and share, you know, what is it that they need help with, right? We don't want to just always assume that we know, okay, do it this way and do it that way, but where are they struggling with? And, you know, Ms. Bianco does a really great job, um, with helping at the, at any of the schools, with any of those folks, but I do want to set up individual coaching plans, so that it's a consistent back and forth. And they have, we don't have it here, but we have what's called the Wows and Wonders, where they do go in on the elementary level and the secondary level, the coaches, and kind of just let the teacher teach, do what they're going to do, and then provide them with those feedback in the next steps. Like, hey, I wonder, wow, great job, right, you were doing this, but I wonder if you did it this way. So it's not necessarily, you didn't do it right, you know what I mean? But it's a, it's a coaching process and coaching them through that process. So we are working with, you know, making sure that we, the PDs are aligned to the needs of our new teachers. Um, and so that's why I said last week was full, and I know they were tired of it, but again, is because we saw that there was a need to make sure that they are informed and have all the, um, skill sets they need to provide instruction.
Yeah, and just you, you were wondering, and I wanted to say, yes, the wow is, I think the tutors are very beneficial.
Yes.
Especially last year, um, I think we saw, and I, we saw, and just in the numbers, and I think also in the ease of the teachers and knowing that they had that support, that they can send some, you know, send a student who were, who was in need of more services to that tutor. So, and I, and I get it, budget, 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 um, I get it.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, the principals have been advocating, right? They, they want to make sure that they can get the tutors in, um, and so I'm glad that we can at least get to that point, and, you know, get it started as soon as we can.
And I think speaking to this as well, especially while we're on the elementary school, and I, and I can constantly think about next year.
Okay.
And I see, you know, I'm seeing what our data look like right now, and, and we don't know how we're gonna finish the year, but as we look to moving everybody together, how do we ensure that, hey, one, the students who are excelling right now, that we continue to address them and continue to build them, but at the same time, help to build those individuals who may be behind that moving over as well? So that way, that person who may be more, um, academically advanced is not stuck trying to, you know, stuck in the classroom.
Right, and, and I, I definitely, um, thank you for even asking that. Um, but that is also why our instructional walkthroughs are very important, because we're trying to make sure there's consistency across the board, right, at the schools, and making sure that the instructional practices that are being implemented, um, the rigor that's being implemented, it's at every school, not just one school, or not just at some schools. Um, you know, we are going to get to a place where we're bringing the principals to discuss what that merger will look like. But, you know, we gotta let the facility, you know, things happen on that, um, end, um, but I do want to move towards making sure that we are bringing the principals together to kind of discuss what's happening, right, and how we can continue to support those kids. But, um, we do, the instructional walkthroughs are really in place to make sure that, you know, the alignment is the same across the board at all the schools, and following the CIP pacing guide.
Good evening, Board Chair Matt Seward, Vice Chair Mr. Ward, Board Members.
Good evening.
Dr. Carter, Superintendent, and members of the community. Uh, I just want to present our data for Russell Middle School. Um, at the beginning, we have English seven, we have seventy-three students that were assessed. We have sixty percent that were mastery, twenty-five percent that were near mastery, and sixteen percent that were, that need remediation. Uh, for our math seven, we had twenty-four percent that were mastery, thirty-six percent that were near mastery, and forty-one percent that need remediation. And for our English eight, we had sixty-eight percent of the students, which eighty-two students were assessed, but sixty-eight percent of the students were mastery, sixteen percent near mastery, and fifteen percent that need remediation. And for our math eight, we had seventy-three students that were assessed, eighteen percent were mastery, forty-one percent were near mastery, and we have forty-one percent that need remediation. Uh, we do have one eighth-grade Algebra One class, which involves or consists of eighteen students, and we have sixty-seven percent that scored mastery, twenty-eight percent that scored near mastery, and five percent that need remediation. And like I said, there's one Algebra One class, and that was eighteen students. And for our science and history, there were forty-seven students that were tested. We have seventy-two percent that were mastery, seventeen percent that were near mastery, and eleven percent that need remediation. And of course, science and history for us are semester classes, so they end in December, then we start with another set of students in January. And for our civics and economics, we have forty-three students that tested. We have forty-two percent that were mastery, thirty-five percent that were near mastery, and twenty-three percent that need remediation. Um, as far as our next steps, we've been doing that, uh, we're not doing anything different than our elementary schools. Of course, I know we're secondary, but we follow the same. than our elementary schools. Of course, I know we're secondary, but we follow the same protocols, same processes for our next steps. One thing that I do want to add, I like how our data PLC meetings are going this year, and we also call in the community of practice. We're not necessarily going in there and presenting the data and presenting the numbers. We're also breaking down the actual benchmark, looking at commonly missed questions, and trying to figure out, well, how did the student miss this question? What was the interpretation of this question? So we found out some of it could be vocabulary, some of it could be technology enhanced item questions where it requires more than one response. So they have multiple questions, multiple steps, and we're doing that across the board, cross-curricular. And it's helping because it's not just English looking at English. It's English maybe looking at a math question, or a math teacher looking at a science question. And like I said, we all came up pretty much with the same goals of maybe vocabulary, and like I said, some of those technology enhanced item questions.
That's good.
And that's our data for Russell Middle School.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Board.
Good evening.
Uh, for the high school, as you can see, we're really pleased with a lot of the mark changes that we've been making. If you look at the data, the area of our strength in mastery is in our science and history department. As you can see, this group has showed the highest mastery rate of seventy-six percent in World History Two. It also features the three courses of World History Two, Virginia, US History, and Biology, where the mastery level exceeded sixty-five percent. And one of the things that we wanted to do this particular time with the data is to compare it, reading and math versus the science and the history. Our area of concern i- as it relates to remediation is in the reading and the math area. And this area presents the most challenges because if you look at the eleventh grade English, that's the area that show the highest remediation rate across all subjects. And this is with fifty-two percent. And Algebra One also showed a significant remediation rate. One of the concerns as we look at Algebra One, and that is that it's a year-long course. And so we continue to provide the necessary targeted instruction with the teachers, along with our instructional team helping us in certain areas, particularly as it relates to our PLCs. One of the things about our near mastery opportunities with the reading and math, it shows the largest volume of students in the near mastery category, suggesting to us that with the tenth grade English Language Art, it has fifty percent as well as Algebra with forty-five percent, meaning that this is the area that can show a little bit more mastery as we put more targeted instruction in that particular area. One of the things that I wanted to suggest as it relates to the eleventh grade English Language Arts, we're looking at some next steps with our ELA instructional team to develop more targeted intervention plans. This plan is specifically designed with our students with disabilities. As you can see, that we had pretty much some challenges in that area, but this is requiring more remediation. And one of the keys to this strategy is to integrate more Lexia. I think Lexia helps with comprehension and helping across the board with alternative teacher models specializing in tier-three support. And that's where you pull out the students in that particular area. With our Algebra One, we're looking at tier-two support, with targeted support with Zern. That's something that we have asked our teachers to do a little bit more of. We've seen increase in that particular area, and algebra has been an area that's been one of our strengths. And so we're trying to get them to use Zern a little bit more. Our instruction team also is coordinating testing groups to finalize our SOL Blitz. That's been one of the things that we've utilized over the last few years. It's been very successful. We didn't get to start with our, not just with our remediation, but also with our tutoring. Got a little late start, but now that we got the funds to do what we need to do, we planned on getting in there. Our core focus is ensuring that our SOL Instruction and Preparation is fully aligned with our DOE testing blueprint. One of the things that we did during our walkthroughs, and we've been doing a little bit more even with our administrative team, is ensure that the alignment is there. A lot of times, when you're looking at the math, and even with our pacing, sometimes we have to adjust our pacing to make sure that we can align so that they can cover the areas that need to cover by the time we take our SOL testing. And one of the things we've also been using is our SDBQs, our student data by questions, that shows reports, that show what particular questions that they're missing frequently. And I think if we can look at that, target that a little bit more, I think that can help them on previous exams as well as upcoming exams. And one of the last things we want to do is to continue with our data driven and individualized remediation with our PLCs, doing our targeted instruction, as well as talking to our teachers and to find out, particularly with our new teachers, what are some of the concerns. One of the things that I'm most pleased with in the area of science, where we've shown some improvement, and then our World History, as you notice, the data has been kind of struggling in that particular area, but we have shown not only marked improvement, but World History Two, seventy-six percent mastery rate, as well, as well as World History One. Teachers have been doing some great things. And science, what we've been trying to do is do more experiments weekly, that hands-on approach, trying to get more understanding with kids, also helping with, with the vocabulary as well as comprehension. So while we're not where we want to be, we have made the improvements that we hope to make. And with science and with history showing the marked improvement, we want to continue in that area. And with math, we'll hopefully do what we need to do to improve the overall scores.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question. With all the students, the total number of students, and that's all the students that could be tested?
Is, well, all the students were not tested at that particular time, and that's for various reasons. Could have been for attendance situations. But what we've been trying to do is if they haven't been tested, we will pull them out to ensure that they are tested on a different date, if they wasn't tested on that particular date. And a lot of times, you know, with attendance, we try to get them in the next day, the next given day, and do those makeup tests.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So this will be my last slide, so I'm just sharing with you guys that as we move forward. So this slide is particular to our fall test prep, inclusive of our SOLs and our benchmarks as we're moving towards both of those things, of course, for our middle school, science and civics we have coming up, and then our high school students that will be testing mid-year as well. And then anyone that is not on the SOL testing docket at this point will take their mid-year benchmarks. One of the things that we are doing, and I noticed that this goes back to one of the questions that was asked earlier, how do we ensure as we all come together that we are all on the same page? And we are already working on these trends and, or I should say, different components that we have listed here. So the first one is DIDOM. That's what we call it. It's the Data Informed Decision Making Process. We don't make decisions just randomly. We have, we have to use the data, break that down, and look at student by student, small group by small group, whatever is needed. So we, we follow that same process at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. So we're already working to norm things so that we're speaking common language on our side, and that we're speaking the same language that our teachers and our administrators are speaking as well. The other thing that we try to focus on are trends. Ms. Hawkins-Weston and I have done a lot of work seeing where some of our trends are. We know we hear, for example, in mathematics, we often hear word problems, but it goes even deeper than that. And so we, we're looking for trends. Where do we see areas where our mathematicians really start to struggle? And do we see those areas coming from the elementary level, continuing to the middle school level, and then to the high school level? So we do a lot of work together, looking for trends that we see and that we spot, and then how can we go ahead and break that down and target those now so that they don't continue to grow? Because we want to make sure that we put a stop to that as soon as possible, especially with any misconceptions that we may see. Articulation, we are meaning vertically, making sure that we are following our students. And as we said, what, what happens? And so if I start in kindergarten, and I'm doing well, in first grade, I'm doing well, in second grade, third grade, and then boom, I, I fall down, then something's happening. So we make sure that we're focusing on that articulation from grade level to grade level in all academic areas. Progress monitoring, that's of course with all of our data and our platforms, but it is also us as individuals, the boots-on-the-ground piece that Ms. Seward mentioned earlier, making sure that we are active participants in the student-centered learning that is taking place in our classrooms. And then, of course, cross-curricular learning, we're doing as much as we can to blend our learning experiences for our students across all academic areas at all grade levels. So this is where we are with preparing. And I, I know it says test prep, SOLs and benchmarks, and I think that that's important, but I also want to make sure that, that you guys know that we're not just, we're not just teaching to the test. We're teaching the kids because they're our why, they're our reason for being here. And so as we're prepping for the test, it goes back to them and just making sure that we are producing those citizens that are prepared for whatever their hearts desire when they leave Brunswick County. So, all right.
Thank you. So as we've looked at our instructional impact walkthroughs, the purpose of those was to strengthen tier-one core instruction. And that way, we're looking at lesson plans, we're looking at objectives, we're looking at the activities to ensure that they align to the rigor, the cognitive rigor of the standard that the students are required to master. So once we strengthen tier-one core instruction, we will reduce the numbers in tier-two and tier-three. But because we have that data, and we are embracing the red, but we know we have to address the red with fidelity through progress monitoring, we have created a slide for every content area and the strategies that we're focusing on. So you guys can see that. As we continue to do tier-two and tier-three instruction, as we are prepping for SOL testing at the middle school and civics and in science, also at the high school, in pretty much all areas with the exception of math, because math is a year long. We may have a few seniors that may need a math course for graduation, but our math population of testing in the fall is going to be very limited. We'll capture all of that in the spring. So tier-three, our teachers, we call it the SOL Blitz during SOL prep time. And what they're doing, they're actually grouping their students according to tier-three needs, which would be like that near mastery in that yellow, and the tier-three in the red. So they're actually coming together, they're doing flexible grouping, they're doing station rotation because they're providing targeted support using Lexia. For example, we looked at the data for ELA eleven. We know that there are some struggles there. However, the teacher, as well as the instructional team, has identified the students that are in tier-two and that are in tier-three. So in the next three weeks before testing, all of the flexible grouping and the station rotation, we will use the resources within our intervention platforms with fidelity and provide that targeted support to our students in the level of comprehension. For ELA, the biggest thing is informational text. That's the non-fictional piece that our students tend to struggle with. So we're choosing text selections that meet the level of complexity for that VDOE standard to make sure that our students are getting that tier-three support. Skill progression. You mentioned earlier, where are we going from elementary to middle to high? VDOE has given all of our teachers like a skills progression chart, where we can see how that skill begins at the elementary level, but then the rigor and complexity of the skill moves to the middle and to the high. So we are really doing that triangulization and that articulation for our students across the board, because the skill never really changes. It's just the level of cognitive rigor that the students must master as they progress from grade level to grade level. So these are interventions for our students, and we do see the progress in the interventions that we're putting in place. We know we're showing it to you now, but this process has already started. We just wanted you to see what we're doing. And you can even see it in the first nine weeks benchmark data. And this week, we're doing quarter two, four point five. That's going to capture the deficiencies or that red from the quarter-one benchmark. Our students are going to be reassessed in the four point five, and we should see growth. So we'll be able to show you that data as well. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to, I don't have a question, but I wanted to just thank each of you for the presentation. I think the data is important. I want to applaud you for the small victories that we're seeing right now. And I just wanted to state, say to each of the administrators, the principals, and the instruction team, that I do love the strategies and interventions that you're putting into place. And one of the things that I heard Ms. Finney touch on and everyone else was about the small groups and, and making sure, switching students around so they could, so no child is left behind, so they can embrace to the next level. So I just wanted to applaud you guys. I know it may not look as spectacular or anything right now, but I appreciate the steps and the efforts that you're taking. And even when you look at, I guess I heard, like, what, one person mentioned something in regards to, you know, one school may have smaller group of students than the other school, but I think embracing that, let me just go back and look, embracing that flexible grouping can help with that. So it shouldn't, I'm not saying it shouldn't matter, because I know it, it ma- probably matters as well, but it should help in that, in that gap there with the flexible grouping, so we can focus on those students who may not be where the next student is at, because every student is different. Every student has different learning abilities, and we have to try to meet them where they're at in order to bring them to where they need to be at. So I just wanted to say thank you, administrators. Thank you to the instruction team. I like how you guys work together, and I look forward to seeing the next data, because we're embracing the red.
Um, ask me again, just.
I'm sorry. No, I'm done. I'm good.
Again, I just want to thank everybody for the presentation. Very insightful, and let us know exactly where we are. It's, you know, it's not trying to sugarcoat anything. It's basically giving us the data as it is. I want to first and foremost just thank you all for the, for that. One of the things I would definitely say is when Dr. Carter first mentioned the walkthroughs, you know, there are certain things he mentioned. And there's one thing that I think he, if, I know you're doing it, but I think he forgot to say, and that was the student engagement piece. I wrote it down, it's my notes. But I think when Dr. Hampton got up and spoke, she actually spoke to the student engagement piece, because that's one of the things I want to look at as well, not just the lesson plans and assessments and everything else, but also the student engagement in that process. So that was very insightful. Also, I think when you mentioned something about the walkthroughs and providing the feedback. One question I do have for you, I think you said that you ought, the team provide the feedback to the principal, and then the principal actually provided to the teacher. Would it be beneficial, and I'm not sure, again, and I know, I don't, I want to mix, I want to mix, mix things together, but I know in my, in my profession, I was evidence practice manager, where part of my goal was to provide feedback, to let them know basically what we observe in the presentation and execution of some of the strategies. And we provide that feedback pretty much right after, right after them delivering it. You know, the students are left or whatever, then we actually ask them, are you ready for feedback? And provide that level of feedback to them, so that way you can give specific examples as to what you observed. And then they can also, oh, yeah, I did do that. You know, and then you can actually kind of help coach and guide them along the way. The principal can be part of that process. But now you know that delivery-wise, it's coming directly from those ones who specialize in it, and they may have specific questions for you versus having that middle person. But kind of having that circle of learning where everybody's involved in that coaching process. I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. You know what I'm saying? But I would just say that I found, even for myself, had gone through a five-week training on effective communication and motivational strategies, that feedback was beneficial because of the fact that allowed me to see exactly where I may have erred in some of the things in which I did, some things I may have not executed as, you know, as well as I probably should have, and as well as giving that positive reinforcement for all the things in which they did extremely well, so they, they can hear it as well, you know, you're doing a great job there. So I think that type of feedback could be beneficial for that individual versus them getting, why, why they had to wait till I get out the room to say, say this, you know? You know, so that, that's one of the things I would definitely, the piece of feedback I would give. So definitely looking at the data, you know, we know that there's work, work to be done. And so if it seems like I was just kind of deep thought, it's because of the fact that, you know, each one of those things, anybody knows I want us to be a blue ribbon school, but I know that we, we, there are steps to get there. And whatever we can do to support that process, e- even, even as we look to opening a new school, there are a lot of decisions that have to be made. You know, one of which is we want a regular, rigorous curriculum as we move over to new school, but also want to make sure that as Ms. Seward stated, having the right people in the right place based upon their strengths. So this is also not only why we're executing, this is also an evaluation period to determine, okay, who's where they need to be and who may need to be shifted a little bit based upon their strengths. That, you know, there are major decisions that have to be made over the next several months. It's not just, okay, we're going to pack our boxes and move them over to the new school, but we have to really be strategic about this, because we only get one time to do, you know, I'm going to say, we got, we have opportunities to improve it, but we only get one time to do this right. So if we can just do it, you know, try to really be strategic about how we execute and how we move into next year, as well as making sure that we keep it in the road this year. But really utilizing that data to develop a plan for, you know, the New Brunswick Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you. That's definitely in the works. I know I've had a couple of principals, mainly Ms. Finney, like, when are we getting together? Right? But I understand, and it's true, you know? You know, and so I definitely.
You know, and so I definitely do agree with you. Um, we can also look into, you know, finding time to meet with the teachers. So, typically when we do the walkthrough, it can be in the morning, it can be in the afternoon, right? And sometimes we're doing two schools in one day. Um, so it's like we jump from one school, you know, sit down with the principal and their title one person. We're going through as an entire group. So, the feedback that the principal, we, I, we just didn't want to take, we wanted to follow the order, right? And so, the principal is the leader of that school. And so, they're hearing directly from their supervisor, right? But they know that their supervisor collaborated with the entire division instructional team that was on that walkthrough. But we can definitely, um, you know, fit that into our schedule. We would have to, it may not be directly after, because we'd have to have a sub or someone available, you know, and so, and sometimes it can be a lot of pressure.
Right, right.
Right? And so, I think a lot of times the teachers are like, okay, good, they're gone, right? And it's just not like they're, it's not that they're doing anything wrong, but it's just having four or five people come into the classroom. Um, and sometimes we just want to be able to walk in without them even knowing, but again, with us just starting, you know, we wanted to give them the heads up, hey, we're coming, right? But I will say in reference to, um, the student engagement, so I actually did have on the PowerPoint where it shared the key findings. I had our percentages. So, we did for this walkthrough, we did fifteen, because we did three at each school. Um, and so, we had a mix of, so we had about forty percent were, uh, veteran teachers and sixty percent were the new teachers. So, we're drilling it down to even who are we looking at? Who are we going into? What is the content area? What are those supports that have been in place? What has the communication been from the principal previously in terms of their feedback? Um, and so, we were glad to see that there was student engagement. But again, I will say that we did announce, hey, we're coming. But I also, you can also tell when you walk in, it's not, it's not a show, right? It's not a rehearsal. This is the normal practice of our students, normal practice of our teachers. And so, that's what we are excited, you know, that's what we were excited about seeing, especially when it came to that student engagement. But prior to the walkthrough, teach, principals were set, were sent, um, just kind of a breakdown of what the walkthrough would look like, um, and our look fours and student engagement and lesson plans and objectives were one of the, a couple of those, um, look fours. So, we don't try to go in and see everything, because we can't. We're literally going in there for about fifteen minutes, right? So, we can't see everything, but the things that we do target and look for, that's what we are able to document and share about. So, then for the next month's, um, walkthrough, it'd be some other instructional look fours. But again, we're still combining the first one. So, we're trying to build upon that, but we don't want to overwhelm our teachers. We already know they're overwhelmed, right? That we already know, but we want to make sure that we are at least supporting, um, their needs. So, but we can definitely as an instructional team, look at how we can, you know, go in with the principal. And I do like that, but it's just really more about the planning and the timing. Um, you know, it's different timing for elementary, different timing for secondary. Um, but that is a good idea, because then I feel like the teacher would, or teachers would feel like, oh, they have the whole backing. Because when we go in and there's a form that principals actually have to fill out that talks about, um, you know, the areas that we talk. So, it's not like they're, you know, just coming up with anything, but it's based off of the feedback that we've all talked about together.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, next we will have Ms. Mallory.
Good evening, Board Chair, Seward, Vice Chair, Warwick, other Board members, and our Division Superintendent. Our, um, attendance report for this evening. So, our attendance rate is coming in at ninety-three percent or better for our schools, as you see, um, the green represents in our bar graphs. If we could go to, need to speak up? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, and if we can go to the next slide. Um, as of November the third, our division had one thousand four hundred twenty-three students enroll, and this is including pre-K. So, we do want to note that. Um, we continue to emphasize attendance conscientiousness, tracking every student's attendance to build strong habits, um, early. So, we have a hundred and sixty-nine students, which is approximately eleven percent of our total enrollment, have missed between six and seventeen days. And we have ten students, which is less than one percent, are currently identified as chronically absent. And that's the breakdown of the data that you have before you. If we could go to the next slide. To proactively support attendance, our team has implemented the following measures. We have twenty-four home visits conducted by our truancy officer, Mr. Morgan, who is absent tonight, as he's a little under the weather, um, five thousand and seventy messages sent through the Kenvo communication system, two thousand and ninety-six phone calls made by school attendance personnel, and nineteen truancy plans developed with conferences held to engage family, families in attendance improvement efforts. Our schools continue to monitor attendance daily and keep a close watch on the factors influencing absences, which includes suspensions, chronic absent, chronic illnesses, and medical appointments, et cetera. We remain committed to promoting consistent attendance and early intervention, ensuring every student is present, engaged, and on track for success. Questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
As it pertains to the Brunswick High School, I know last, um, last month, there was some question. I know they were in a, you know, change with staffing and things that they just were reporting. The number here, I know we talked, we all, we discussed it last, in the last meeting, may not be completely accurate. The hundred, the hundred percent for the week as well as the ninety-nine point one-two percent, um, nine, nine-nine point twelve percent for the year to date.
Okay. So, when you go by this, this is the attendance rate in Kenvo. So, it's the, um, system where the, the attendance has been taken by the teachers and it's marking over into the system, okay? But when you look at our students, then the drill down is going to be on, if you go to the slide that has the attendance data per se, um, then that's the one that's going to be the drill down. So, what they have been doing is, um, going in, making sure that attendance has been accurately marked. One of the things we did detect, now I was not at the last school, I mean, because we had a conflict with our schedule and had to attend a conference for the division. However, um, one of the things I do know that they were working on is, in the past, they had a home, um, room block, and that's what we mark attendance from. We noticed that that was not in place for all students, so they had to go in and add that block in, and the attendance, um, personnel had to work on coding that block based off of the attendance for the students. Was that one of the things that came up, or?
No, that didn't come up, um, that particular part didn't come up relative to the homeroom. But I'm just looking at years past in the high school attendance. This is the lowest we've seen, and I think in regards to attendance issue in the last, I want to say, seven, eight more years.
You mean their ti- their attendance looks higher, the ninety-nine percent?
Attendance of actually being in class looks a lot higher. And I just kind of wonder, is that for a true depiction of, I, I, not that if it is, it's great.
Right, right, alright.
It is, it's great.
Right.
We're embracing the red.
It is, and it's great.
Yeah, I will say, that is one of the areas that we focused on, um, more this year attendance. With our attendance clerk, we got a new clerk, as well as, you know, making calls, uh, doing the things necessary. Now, in times past, we perhaps didn't have the staff to cover down, but we have Mr. Morgan with our, um, you know, truancy specialist, as well as two additional persons to make these calls. And I've been going out as well, you know, talking to some parents, if I notice a child has been tardy a lot, uh, it may, um, cause a potential attendance problem. And I've been getting more involved as well. So, I will say, uh, that we've been doing more active things as relates to making sure that they, they come more regularly. It may not be a hundred percent, but it's not a nine point nine percent.
Alright, sounds good.
And we'll continue to monitor that as well, and, and go back and look at a few things with that.
And we'll continue more from this, hold on, who are you?
No problem. I thank you too, I appreciate it. No problem.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
They can make up time.
They can make up time, right? If they miss school, don't they have a after school or something they can come to? Does that come into play with the, with the data?
So, we haven't gotten word on the makeup of the time like we did in the past yet. Um, the only thing that they're doing is going back and looking at how things have been coded and looking at, um, if students were absence, absent and had a, um, were able to get a excuse, then that might be marked as an excuse, um, absence. However, in chronic absenteeism, unexcused, excused, and suspensions, everything counts toward chronic absenteeism.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Okay? And a school, um, accreditation will only be impacted if they are fifteen percent or greater at the end of the school year, which would be eighteen days for students.
Okay.
Okay? And fifteen percent of their population.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Pearson, our local license update.
Good evening again. Before you on the agenda, you should see the request for, um, approval to add one additional person to our local license eligibility. As you know, this was approved, um, through Senate Bill one forty-two. It's a one-year non-renewable, and that is typically issued to anyone that is within the criteria of, um, needing only certain small items to be able to obtain licensure. Um, we do have an individual listed on the personnel agenda tonight for approval, um, to be issued that, um, through the school board. Do you have any questions regarding that?
No, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good night.
First slide is our revenue as of October the thirty-first. The second slide is our expenditures by category and as of October thirty-first. Our ADM is, as of October thirty-first, is one thousand three hundred and fifty-two, which is an increase.
Cool.
Um, if there are any questions about that, I can move on to our school accounts audit.
Board members, no question.
Our fiscal year twenty-five school accounts audit was prepared by Robinson Farmer Cox Associates and was completed for all schools. All findings and recommendations will be reviewed by the school bookkeeper and principal, and we will get a written, um, action plan on each item. Uh, none of the recommendation, none of the recommendations required an audit management letter. So, we, we were okay with that.
Alright.
Um, you will receive an email copy of the entire audit, and it is attached in board docs for your review. So, we don't need any further action at this time on our fiscal year twenty-five school accounts audit.
Good, thank you.
Next is the child nutrition rollover bids update. The child nutrition department received a new bid for the twenty-five twenty-six school year from Rudy's Exotic Mushroom and Produce. The recommendation.
I'm first to go. Okay. Oh, it's back.
Did you, were you having a question?
Yeah, it's right.
Yes. I'll be glad to email you the attachment.
Yes, we have it.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Dr. Carter, with the bus use request.
Yes, we have a request to use the school bus from four H to take the students to a winter camp in December. Um, the school board usually has approved the four H's use of the bus to go to their camp in the summer when they go to Holiday Lake. But this time, they want to extend an opportunity for them to go to a winter camp as well. When the four H, um, group uses the bus, it is paid for through Virginia Tech and the extension office. So, they, um, pay for fuel, they pay for the driver, they just, and they also have their own supplemental insurance. They just need school board's approval to use the vehicle for a non-school purpose.
Alright.
Cool.
Any overnight field trips? No, none at this time? Alright, our agenda preparation for upcoming meetings. Our VSBA annual convention will be Tuesday, uh, November eighteenth through Friday, November twenty-first in Williamsburg as per usual. And then our regular school board meeting will be Monday, December eighth, here in the tech center at its usual time. Any committee reports, um, personnel, Dr. Bear, um, Dr. Burns?
For personnel? Um, the personnel committee met on, that's okay, on Thursday.
I'm like days old.
It's okay, October the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at four fifty P M. Um, the attendees included myself, Mr. Per Year, um, Dr. Carter, and Mrs. Pearson. Um, during the meeting, the committee reviewed information regarding personnel matters with staff placements and legal review.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, Dr. Burns, you're up for our instruction committee report.
The instruction committee, um, met on Thursday the sixth at five P M. So, it was myself, Dr. Hampton, Mrs. Hawkins, Wesson, and Mrs. Bianco. And pretty much the, uh, conversation or they presented information that they gave tonight.
Awesome, thank you. Next, we'll move down to our action items. Board members, I will entertain a motion to approve the child nutrition rollover bids as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the child nutrition rollover bids as presented.
I second.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I will entertain a motion that we approve the, uh, four H bus use request as presented.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the four H bus use permit or request as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Will there be a motion to approve the minutes from our October fourteenth meeting as presented?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes, uh, from our last meeting, which is October fourteenth, as presented.
I'll second.
It was moved and properly second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Approval of bills.
Okay, uh, for the bills, I checked, everything was in order, no, no issues, no concerns, no problems. I make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Personnel list. I will entertain a motion that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel, um, list as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
Not a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All those in favor. Uh, is there a second?
Are we adjourned, are we adjourned until Friday?
Friday for what?
The, the board retreat? The board retreat, the board retreat, for the, for the board retreat.
We are regen- adjourning until?
It's the board retreat, yeah.
Tuesday.
The VSBA conference is live. You don't have to.
No, but I'm talking for the board retreat.
Well, before we adjourn, I just want to make a comment, and I know we all ready to go home, but we still here now. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Kinsey for, um, leaving tonight.
We, we, yeah, we, we still got.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, there is a motion on the table that we have a, well, is that what?
Now do board comments?
Are we doing a board retreat?
We didn't send it.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, no problem, okay.
We doing board comments?
Yeah, we, but we still got it.
Oh, okay. We don't, we skip board.
Oh, my bad.
It's okay. I know we ready to go home, but I still want to acknowledge Ms. Kinsey, um, and congratulations to everyone who was, uh, received student of the month, Ms. Grace Pearson, phenomenal job she's doing. Um, congratulations to Ms. Morgan, Mr. Gerald. I also wanted to thank those who supported the, um, breast cancer walks, and Ms. Finney, I thank you. I thank Dr. Carter and Ms. Pearson for the donations they provided to the event. I also wanted to share with the board that I had received a, um, appointment by the president for the Virginia School Board Association to, um, I was appointed to the federal relations committee for twenty twenty-six. I'm excited about that opportunity, um, that's coming up. And I will be going away in, um, February for the institute for that, so I just wanted to share that with you guys. And congratulations to the football team for making it, as far as they did as well too. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Board members?
No, I don't have it. No, no comments.
As for me, I just again, I wanted to thank everybody for the great presentations. I want to thank, uh, want to congratulate the student of the month, as well as to our employees of the month as well, uh, for your great contributions to our division, as well as, you know, looking forward to continue to work to, you know, embrace the red while continue to celebrate, you know, the, all those accomplishments we have made along the way. So, I want to, um, just thank the team for an awesome job on that as well. Um, looking forward to. Looking forward to, looking forward to, you know, professional development for our board coming up next Tuesday. So I think I got ahead of myself when I was starting mentioning it, but yes, want to thank everybody for, um, want to thank everybody, as well as, want to try and acknowledge that I'm excited about that new opportunity coming up next week. All right, sorry about that.
Just, again, thanks for the hard work for everybody. And I know you little break coming for Thanksgiving, so I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and a safe time.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Enjoy your time off. I know you look forward to it.
Absolutely. And I do share the sentiments of the board, not to rush through the board comments, they are very important. It's been a long day. Sure has been that way for all of us who are here. So again, thank you all for all that you do. At this point, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.